All right, please take your seats so that we can begin the meeting. All right, welcome. Let's begin today's meeting and hear the public testimony on non-agenda items. We have over 20 speakers this evening, so each speaker will have up to two minutes to address the board. And please remember, no deferral of time is allowed. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your two-minute time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. Let's go ahead and begin. Please come down and speak in any order. Suzanne Landry, Bernadette Udreria, Jenny Goodman, Minerva Espejo, Gabriela Contreras. Please come down and speak in any order.
Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Landry. I'm a parent to a kindergartner and a second grader at Spreckles Elementary. I fully understand the district policy on how staffing allocations are calculated, but what we're here asking for is for you to give Spreckles special consideration to leave our staffing levels as they are to better accommodate our unique situation. We're a Spanish magnet with 41% English language learners. Half of our students are on free or reduced lunch. Three-quarters have choice to the school, and 48 have IEPs. We're also in our fourth year of program improvement. One of the most troubling aspects is that our enrollment has been significantly declining in the past several years. Five years ago, we had around 850 students. This year, we only have 604. Even though young families keep moving to the area with school-aged children, we continue to have a sharp decline. Would you want to send your child to a school that will uproot her from her class every year in mid-October, October, and reshuffle her to a new one, likely a combination class, or to a school that markets itself as a bilingual magnet but has no English language support teacher, or one that can't obtain the resources and support it needs to help pull itself out of program improvement? Families are saying no. Every year, some of our best and most qualified teachers are lost to other schools or duties when they could clearly benefit our students most by staying put. It would be in the district's best interest to attract more families to our school instead of convincing them to leave for charters, private schools, and schools in other neighborhoods. We want a quality school in our neighborhood. Please help us.
Good afternoon. My name is Bernadette Etridia, and I am the PTA president at Spreckles Elementary. I'm here to represent the hundreds of Spreckles families who have been adversely affected by this past five years of classes being realigned many weeks after school is underway. Right now, many of our students are anxiously awaiting word if they will be moved or lose their teacher once again this year. Unfortunately, there are also many who are no longer at Spreckles because their families have grown tired of this annual shuffle and have moved their children either out of the district or to a different school. We all know the budget is tight and tough decisions have to be made, but what we don't understand is why this situation keeps happening at Spreckles. You've promised San Diego a quality school in every neighborhood, but yet we have yet to see the school district help us to make this a reality at Spreckles. This time around, not only are we losing two teachers, but our ELST teacher is being put back into the classroom and will no longer be available to assist children facing challenges. She is a vital resource to our school, providing additional support for many children who need it. We've now been on program improvement for four years. How can we possibly change our status with fewer resources and less support for the children while implementing the new curriculum the Common Core brings? We are here to implore you to find a way to stop this cycle right now. We want to make sure you have exhausted every avenue before you make your final decision. Have parents of Doyle been given the opportunity to come to our school since they are overcrowded? Have some of our students at other schools in the area been contacted to join our program? If we lose these teachers, hundreds of children will be negatively affected, and many of them will choose an alternative learning environment going forward, further compounding our issues with declining numbers over the last few years. We simply cannot improve without the appropriate resources, and respectfully request that you give us a chance at success by allowing our current teaching staff for the 2014-15 school year. Thank you.
I've called Jenny Goodman, Minerva Espejo, and Gabriela Contreras. Please come forward.
My name is Minerva Espejo, and I pass on papers. And my letter is in Spanish, and then to don't waste my time, she's gonna read it in English.
She sends it ahead of time, so as not to waste time reading it in both languages.
Great, thank you.
My name is Minerva Espejo. I am an active member of the Sherman Roosevelt and San Diego High School ELAC. I am also a parent representative for the San Diego cluster. Today, I have come as a representative for the district's ELAC to talk about the benefit of having an efficient ELST within schools using Sherman Elementary as an example. Please, I have provided a detailed description of the responsibilities and duties for our ELST at Sherman. I ask you to look them over. Having the ELST performed proficiently and faithfully is key for successfully meeting the standards for the 21st century. This position provides additional support to EL students, serves as a liaison between parents, teachers, students, and the administration, and supports monthly ELAC meetings as well as monitoring the progress of the EL students until they are reclassified. Therefore, we ask that you comply with the alignments established in the Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP, in reference to maintaining the economic resources and support for EL so that they can accomplish the established goals. You promote the return of the ELST position to schools. You provide a written account of who or whom will be responsible for covering the ELST responsibilities at the schools that lost the position. You do not remove any more, excuse me, you do not remove any more ELST positions, and you invest in this position being effective. You specify and remind principals about the ELST's responsibilities addressing academic advancement and English progress of the ELs. You keep the ELST position since it effectively and efficiently complies with the implementation of the following district quality indicators: number five, closing the achievement gap; number six, parent participation; number seven, assuring quality schools; number eight, valuing diversity; number seven, you inform DLEC so that this board can then communicate to its ELAC members about everything related to English language learners so that these can be active participants in the decision-making process. You have to respect our right to participate in the decisions that affect our children's education, and it continues.
Thank you. Roberto Garcia, Vivian Garcia, Miranda Ramirez. Please come forward and speak in any order.
Okay. My name is Gabriela Contreras Mistrelioglu, and I'm here as an ELAC representative of Language Academy, and I'm also a board member on the District Advisory Council. Again, it's about the ELST positions. We did not have an opportunity as SEC members to discuss this matter and to fully assimilate the news about the budget, the budget that was already in place in our SPSAs. So, as a parent, I'm here to convey the message that a difficult and drastic action like this one, it takes time for parents to, first of all, understand, assimilate, discuss, and then be part of that decision-making process. Then, it took us a while to convey this message to our parents in our own schools. It is quite interesting that now that they came back to school after buying uniforms, school supplies, all of that, now they realized what we were fully discussing in the past, and parents are very angry about this. So, as a DAC member, I just would like to convey this message from our parents and DLEC. Thank you.
Dear Board of Education, my name is Roberto Garcia, and I am in eighth grade at CPMA. I'm an EL student, and I want to know why the decision was made to take away my ELST. I want to know what will be responsible for providing me with the support and services of ELD that I need, that I'll need, and that I have the right to receive to reclassify. I want to go to high school and graduate and continue on to college to respond to me at your earliest convenience.
My name is Vivian Garcia, and I am in sixth grade at Lafayette. I am an EL student, and I want to know who will be in charge to provide me with the services of ELD that I need to reclassify. If you decide to take away my ELST, this will impact me negatively. I want to graduate from high school, and I want to go to college. Please respond to me at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sergio Villaseñor, y soy vicepresidente de ELAC en San Diego High School. Primeramente, lamento mucho no estar aquí para elogiarlos y aplaudirles, como serían mis deseos. Sin embargo, quiero asegurarme de que sepan que estamos indignados y no estamos pisoteados por tanta arbitrariedad, hipocresía, falta de respeto, manipulación, y lo peor, ignorancia de nuestras peticiones por parte de ustedes.
Good evening. My name is Sergio Villaseñor, and I'm the president of the San Diego High School ELAC. First, I want to tell you that I'm not here to praise you or applaud you like I would like to do. Instead, I want to make sure that you know that we feel indignant, and we feel stepped on by so much arbitrariness, hypocrisy, disrespect, manipulation, and the worst ignorance of our petitions by you.
Hace tres meses hicimos peticiones por escrito, y como siempre, sin respuesta alguna por parte de ustedes. Nos aseguraron que se iban a atender las peticiones de las posiciones de ELST, y nuestra sorpresa fue que se desatendieron. Una vez más, respuestas de dientes para fuera. Señores, eso se llama demagogia. Lamentamos muchísimo decirles confundamentos y testimonios que ustedes no están cumpliendo con su cometido, que es luchar y velar por los intereses en bien de la educación.
Three months ago, we requested in writing, and as usual, with no response from you. You assured us that you were going to take care of the requests about the ELST positions, and our surprise were that they were ignored. Once again, your responses were pure rhetoric. Ladies and gentlemen, this is called demagoguery. We are very sorry to tell you with foundation and testimony that you are not following through with a commitment which is to fight for and to watch out for the interests, in the interests of education.
La semana pasada, en reunión mensual de DLEC, los padres de familia llegaron al tope de sus peticiones, de sus paciencias, al tener que soportar las actitudes negativas y prepotentes de la señora de DLEC, Deborah DeGurney. Que descaradamente niegue el derecho de hablar en turno a alguien que obviamente no quiere escuchar. Que manipule la reunión e ignore las personas, como se evidenció.
Last week, in the last monthly reunion, our meeting, a DLEC meeting, the parents of family reached the end of their patience when they had to put up with the negative attitudes and predisposition of the DLEC director, Deborah Doherty, who disrespectfully denied the right to speak, or the ability to speak to someone who obviously doesn't want to listen, that manipulates the meeting and ignores people, as it was evidenced there.
También es inaceptable que miembros de Ola manipulen a su antojo, se tomen atribuciones que son legales, sí, que no son legales, como es el hecho de tomar decisiones tan importantes e impactantes sin consultar a la membresía, y argumentar descaradamente que las decisiones se tuvieron que tomar por premuras de tiempo, además ignorando y desviando la moción de los participantes. Estos hechos se están haciendo cada vez más comunes y frecuentes. También en las escuelas, es lo peor de todo. Pues cómo no, si se promueven aquí mismo, en este recinto.
It's also unacceptable that members of Ola manipulate at their will, that they take rights that are not legal, like it is to make decisions that are so important and impacting without consulting the membership, and arguing disrespectfully that the decisions that had to be made because they didn't have enough time. Also ignoring and, como desviando...
Desviando.
Moving away from the motions of the participants. These facts are becoming, these acts are becoming more and more common and frequent, also at the schools. Well, why not, if they're promoted right here in this venue?
Thank you very much. That's your time.
Señores del comité.
I'm sorry. Lo siento. That's your time.
That's too bad.
Veronica Rivera, Olivia Alcon, Valentina Hernandez, and Theo Stein.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Veronica Rivera. Vengo de la escuela FEI. Estoy aquí apoyando a los padres que tienen niños o tenemos niños todos a en vías de aprender inglés.
Hello, my name is Veronica Rivera. I'm here from FEI School. I'm here representing the parents that have children that are English language learners.
Yo tengo una pregunta para ustedes sobre por qué destituyeron a los maestros ELST de sus cargos.
I have a question for you. Why, I'd like to know why you removed the ELSTs from their positions.
Yo como mamá quiero que mis hijos, y no nada más mis hijos, somos muchos latinos o hispanos y no hispanos, de diferentes idiomas que necesitan aprender inglés. Y para mí es muy importante que esos niños se reclasifiquen, que aprendan bien el inglés, y necesitan un maestro de apoyo en vías de aprender inglés.
And as a Hispanic mother, Latin mother, but not just as a Hispanic mother, but as a mother of a child that speaks another language other than English, we'd like to know why these supports were removed for children that need the support to be reclassified in English.
Y que los niños que ya se reclasificaron tengan un seguimiento.
And that the children that were reclassified have followed through.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Hola. Mi nombre es Susana Carrillo, y soy madre de tres niños. Y estoy aquí para expresar mi opinión acerca de los cambios hechos por el Distrito Unificado de San Diego.
Hi, my name is Susana Carrillo, and I'm a mother of three children. I'm here to express my opinion about the changes made by the San Diego Unified School District.
Yo soy miembro activo de ELAC en Florence Elementary. Y como ya mencioné antes, tengo tres hijos, de los cuales dos de ellos han sido reclasificados.
I am a member of the ELAC at Florence Elementary, and like I mentioned before, I have three children, of which two of them have already been reclassified.
Mi preocupación principal es que estos niños, al no tener su maestro de apoyo que es ELST, ellos se ven forzados a estar en su clase y no tienen las mismas oportunidades para aprender como los demás niños.
My concern is that these children without their ELST have to remain in their classes and will not have the same opportunities to learn as other children.
Porque este maestro, aparte de enseñar a los niños mayor vocabulario en inglés, él es un apoyo en otras áreas importantes, las cuales impactan el nivel académico de cada niño.
Because this teacher, as well as teaching them more vocabulary, is a big help in other areas that impact their academic level.
Solo por mencionar algo importante en mi hijo que no ha sido reclasificado, él en el primer año, él entró leyendo a nivel cuatro.
Just for one example, my child who has not been reclassified came in reading at a level four.
Pero su maestro de ELST le ayudó tanto que al terminar el año él salió leyendo un nivel 24.
But his ELST helped him so much during one year that he ended up reading at a level 24.
Él es un niño que aparte de ser un niño de segundo lenguaje tiene speech.
This is a child that, as well as being a second language learner, an English language learner, has also a speech.
No digo que su maestro regular de su clase no les ayude, simplemente que su maestro regular cada vez tiene más niños en su salón a su cargo que no tiene el tiempo de enfocarse en estas necesidades de estos niños.
And I'm not saying that the classroom teachers don't help. It's just every time they have more and more children in their classroom and don't have the time to dedicate to the needs of these children.
Solo la pregunta que me obliga a hacerles es, ¿por qué ustedes creen que van a seguir apoyando a los niños en vías de aprender inglés si no tienen una persona trabajando directamente con los niños?
So my question that I have to ask you is, why do you think that you're supporting children that are learning English if you don't have someone in place to help these children?
¿Quienes van a estar trabajando directamente con estos niños, y quiénes les van a hacer saber a ustedes los avances de estos niños y a subir las necesidades?
And who is going to be working directly with these children? Who's going to let you know about the progress of these children, as well as their needs?
Porque no va a haber nadie de intermediario entre el niño y el distrito.
Because there will be no intermediary between the child and the district.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Señora Carrillo, you need to fill out a speaker slip, please. We don't have a speaker slip for you. Thank you. Olivia Alcon, is Olivia here? Okay, thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Olivia Alcon, and I'm here representing CPMA Middle School and Lafayette. My kids are in Lafayette and CPMA, and I'm very upset and concerned at the fact of my kids have lost their ELST position. And in order for them to be reclassified, they really need the support. They are long-term English learners, and we're supposed to have these positions and campus. Also, what is going to happen when all the schools are losing the ELSTs? Who's going to be in charge of the ELAC committees? Because ELAC is an advisory committee, so who's going to be able to do these advices to the district if we don't have an ELAC, English learner support teacher? And also, if these ELACs are going to disappear, what is going to happen? And who is going to be in charge of these services for the ELs? My daughter and my son, they need the services. They really need the support. My kids want to go to college. They need to, they really need the support. And please, this is a petition from all these parents who are attending here to keep our ELST positions in the school site, please. And I am going to...
Okay, nuevamente estoy aquí con ustedes, señores del comité y señora Cindy Martin.
Here again with you.
Ya perdieron credibilidad ante nosotros. Yo me pregunto, yo me pregunto, conocen o desconocen estos hechos, solapan o manipulan estos hechos? Creo que está más que obvio el desgaste y enojo de padres de familia que hemos trabajado con mucho empeño. ¿Para qué? ¿Para que ustedes simplemente nos ignoren y manipulen? No vemos acciones ni resultados concretos, solo más de lo mismo. Señores del comité, si no pueden con el paquete, por favor, renuncien o nosotros lo solicitamos. Ya basta que nos vean la cara cada vez que nos paramos en este podium sin lograr absolutamente nada, nada.
I ask myself, do you know or not know about these facts? Or do you just cover up or manipulate these facts? I think that it's more than obvious about the waste and the exhaustion and anger that these parents feel that have, these parents that have worked so hard so that you simply just ignore them and manipulate them. We don't see any action nor concrete results, only more of the same. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, if you can't handle the job, please give up your job, and we will, or else we will ask that you do so. That's enough, that you see our faces every week and that we stand up here at this podium without being able to accomplish anything.
Thank you. Valentina Hernandez, Theo Stein, Joanne Fields, Lindsey Burningham, Erin Levitt.
Hello, everybody. I am Valentina Hernandez, the ex-DLEC chairperson for four years and the ex-DLEC secretary for another four years. And as you know, we are not very happy with what happened with the ELST positions. We sent a letter as DLEC board last summer in June. We did not get one response from the board. Maybe we got one from you, from one of your members. But that's not right. If we are giving you a specific letter stating that we need to keep those positions and keep the services for the English language learners, as you know, we have a lot of long-term English learners also. And if we really want all students to succeed, those students need that ELST. The ELSTs have been doing a great job, and now we've lost more than 60, and we might lose another 33, I hear. That is ridiculous. Who is going to be giving the CELTIC exams? Who is going to reclassify these students? Who is going to give them the ongoing support so that they could be reclassified? Who's going to make sure that the teachers in the regular classrooms are giving the English language development in their classrooms to the students at their specific level? If it wasn't for the ELSTs, those programs would...
Yo me pregunto, ¿conocen o desconocen estos hechos? ¿Solapan o manipulan estos hechos? Creo que está más que obvio el desgaste y enojo de padres de familia que hemos trabajado con mucho empeño. ¿Para qué? ¿Para que ustedes simplemente nos ignoren y manipulen? No vemos acciones ni resultados concretos, solo más de lo mismo. Señores del comité, si no pueden con el paquete, por favor renuncien o nosotros los solicitamos. Ya basta que nos vean la cara cada vez que nos paramos en este podium, sin lograr absolutamente nada. Nada.
I ask myself, do you know or not know about these facts? Or do you just cover up or manipulate these facts? I think that it's more than obvious about the waste and the exhaustion and anger that these parents feel, that have, these parents that have worked so hard so that you simply just ignore them and manipulate them. We don't see any action nor results, nor concrete results, only more of the same. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, if you can't handle the job, please give up your job and we will, or else we will ask that you do so. That's enough, that you see our faces every week and that we stand up here at this podium without being able to accomplish anything.
Thank you. Valentina Hernandez, Thea Stein, Joanne Fields, Lindsey Burningham, Erin Levitt.
Hello, everybody. I am Valentina Hernandez, the ex-ELAC chairperson for four years and the ex-ELAC secretary for another four years. And as you know, we are not very happy with what happened with the ELST positions. We sent a letter as ELAC board last summer in June. We did not get one response from the board. Maybe we've got one from you, from one of your members. But that's not right. If we are giving you a specific letter stating that we need to keep those positions and keep the services for the English language learners, as you know, we have a lot of long-term English learners also. And if we really want all students to succeed, those students need that ELST. The ELSTs have been doing a great job. And now, we've lost more than 60 and we might lose another 33, I hear. That is ridiculous. Who is going to be giving the CELTIC exams? Who is going to reclassify these students? Who is going to give them the ongoing support so that they could be reclassified? Who's going to make sure that the teachers in the regular classrooms are giving the English language development in their classrooms to the students at their specific level? If it wasn't for the ELSTs, those programs would have went downhill because nobody else really wanted to do it. But it's very important that we increase the English language development in the classrooms for one hour a day if possible, so that way the students can reclassify faster. As you guys somewhere mentioned that you want to increase the number of students that get reclassified by 10%, how are you going to do it with less staff doing the work? At Hoover High School, we found out that the principal did not fight for the ELST position. He fought for the person staying and teaching Spanish. We don't care about the person, we care about the position. We need someone there specifically to work with the students. And also, ELAC. Who, if we do not have an ELST or somebody that really is into English learners and supporting parents, who's going to do the ELAC meetings? Are they just going to not happen? Is that going to be what you want, so that way you don't get input from parents? You guys want parent involvement. Here we're giving you parent involvement. You know we are very committed. We have been very committed since our children were in preschool. You know I've been committed. And you know that we want you to succeed. And how are you going to succeed? By getting those positions back. And saying that other people, other staff on the staff is going to do the work of the ELSTs, how are you going to guarantee me that they're really going to do the job? I don't trust it. We don't trust it. Please, do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to switch gears. My name is Joanne Fields. I'm the director of the District E Trustee Cabinet. I'm also a member of the Filipino Educators Association. And on behalf of the president, Jackie Lopide, who would prefer to be here, but her mom had to be taken to ER this morning, so she's not able to convey the message I'd like to share with you. And I share with her to give thanks to the principals. President Kevin Beiser also participated in our annual Filipino-American festival. As you may know, October is Filipino History Month. I also want to thank our principals that recognized very active Filipino parents on each of their campuses, namely Principal King at Zamorano Fine Arts Academy, Principal Thompson at Nye Elementary, Principal Sepas at Bethune K8, Principal Hubbard and Vice Principal Marco Saminago. And representing Principal Whaley from SEPA was Ms. Anderson. They participated with us this past Saturday. It was a great event. And I'm just excited that there's recognition of all parents across the district, but in particular, our Filipino parents in District E. I also want to remind you, we have our event October 18th at Lincoln High School. Our theme is to invest in schools, not prisons. There's a lot of talk about how many prisons have been erected since 1980. 22 prisons versus one university in the UC system. So we want to raise the issue and hope that we can garner support, not only in the community, but with all of you. Because it is important that we continue to invest in schools so we don't lose any more of the support teachers that people are advocating for. So I hope we see you October 18th, Lincoln High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Goodman. You called my name earlier, but I wasn't here yet. Thank you, traffic in San Diego. I'm a parent at Spreckels Elementary. My daughter's in the fifth grade. And I'm here to tell you that one size does not fit all. When you are looking at this reorganization, it is imperative that you look at the school's individual needs. Spreckels Elementary is in its fourth year of program improvement. Part of the reason that we are having difficulty at our school is, I believe, a direct result of the board's decisions and actions that almost every single fall, we are dealing with this exact same situation. Six weeks in, our kids have to be reshuffled around. Six weeks in, we are losing teachers. Last year, we lost two teachers. This year, we're scheduled to lose another two teachers. We're actually having to move our English language support teacher to a full-time teaching position. You know, as the previous commentators spoke, think about how hard it is when the gentleman up here was speaking Spanish. I understood some of it because I had some basic Spanish in my elementary school and in college, all the way through college. But most of what he said, I couldn't understand. Think about as a student, how difficult it is to read, to learn math, if you don't understand English. Those positions are critical to the success of our schools. And I implore you, please take a look at the school's individual needs. If this was just a situation where a formula dictates how many students or how many teachers are at a school, then we wouldn't need you up there. Because we could just figure that out ourselves. We elected you because we want you to look at things and look critically at them. And that's what we're asking you to do now.
Hi, my name's Erin Levitt. I'm a second grade teacher at Spreckels Elementary. This is Betty McGuire.
I'm a kindergarten teacher at Spreckels Elementary.
Yeah, and there's two things we'd like to address. The first thing is the way that this transition and reorganization has been handled year after year. As she said, every year in October, we have to reshuffle all of our kids. And for some reason, this keeps happening to us with the numbers game at Spreckels. And I don't know why, because this keeps happening, we haven't found a better solution for it. We all know that this is not what's best for kids and for our community. And so, we need to find a better way to handle this. Some of Betty's kindergarten students will have had three teachers by mid-October and they're just learning how to be in school and they're, you know, five. And having three teachers within a month, that's absurd. And then, to speak to my personal situation, I'm at home right now on leave with my newborn and I'm being accessed. And I'm on leave, yet I need to come in and take days to move my classroom to a new position in a new community that I don't know. And we'll start a classroom, but a sub's going to have to come in to start the classroom until I come back from, I don't know, but I don't know how to solve that problem. But it's going to happen. Sorry, the other thing is about Spreckels situation. Betty and I have been there for nine years and every single year we've seen Spreckels lose resources. We've lost our magnet funding for the Spanish. We have a dedicated staff who's dedicated to integrating Spanish, but we've lost all funding to do that. We've lost money for busing, which has brought a really diverse, wonderful population to the UC area. We've lost our vice principal, Dr. Gordon, he's fantastic. We're losing our ELST this year. Our class size has been up and down every year, up, up and up, sorry. And we've just, every fall, we've had to reorganize. And I don't know why this is, all these factors are, you know, against us at Spreckels and it's not fair. And I'm devastated to be leaving this community this year. We have such an amazing staff and amazing supportive family, community there. And I know I will find a new home somewhere else, but it's just a wonderful school with great potential. And it's sad to see that we can't work together to make it as great as it can be.
Our best interest is also in the students' favor. So that's our focus.
It's all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Martin. I'm just here to talk to you a little bit about our Fight for Five and the district's budget. The Fight for Five is about making students, educators, and our classrooms a budget priority. The budget has been balanced on the backs of our students, classrooms, and educators for too long during the recession. And it needs to not only become the priority of what we say, but also within our budget. The district talks about a deficit, yet we continue to see increases in areas such as books and supplies, communications, consulting, and other bargaining units, while the percent you spend on classrooms, educators, is decreasing. You have the opportunity now, with the funding steadily increasing until 2021, to make students, classrooms, and educators a budget priority. We must be able to recruit and retain a committed teaching force. With the increasing demands on our educators, it is important that the board recognize the time and commitment our members put in daily. I want to thank the board members that have agreed to meet with SDA members and re-recognize that meeting with our members, you who are your constituents, showed your commitment to open dialogue and discussion with us. As the board and superintendent work together to provide further parameters for your bargaining team, I hope you take this as an opportunity to show your respect for our common Fight for Five priorities, which include lower class sizes across the board, more nursing counseling and special education support for our students that most need it, more elementary enrichment programs, planning and prep time so that we can do our best teaching, and recruiting and retaining a high-quality staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizen Joellen Archer, Janice Taylor Romstad, Adalina Ramirez. Please come forward and speak in any order.
My name is Joellen Archer and you have my address on file. And tonight, I'd like to call your attention to what's happening at Alba, where I work. Right now, we only have 25 students, but out of that number, 18 are on the free lunch form, two are on the reserve. That means 80% of our students qualify for free reduced lunch. Yet, out of the 25 students, only one student lives within the zip code of where Alba is, at 4141 Oregon Street. Therefore, they all need a bus pass. A student bus pass costs $36 a month. These parents cannot afford $36 a month. We had one child try to ride his scooter from Hammishaw Road. Now, he said it took him three hours and he was still late. You are giving buses from kids, and we have them, from Hoover, Crawford, Clark. You're providing bus passes. If you want Alba and not having the children go to court schools, we need your help. We need bus passes for our students. It's not fair to the students that they aren't getting to school because their families can't afford $36 a month. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to refer that item to the superintendent for follow-up.
Hi, my name's Janice Taylor Romstad and I'm here representing Nye Elementary School. I can empathize with Spreckels. As we're going through the same reorganization process, it's extremely painful. I know that Ms. Foster and Ms. Martin were out helping us celebrate an opening of a new playground, peaceful playgrounds. Since that time, we were informed that we would be reorganizing. That's just a matter of days. You were at our school last Tuesday. This didn't give our school site council and school site governance board any time to have input into any decisions that were made. In fact, our staff is not yet fully informed about the reorganization at Nye Elementary. You know what a gem our school is. We not only received the Charger Grant this year, we've been a California distinguished school in southeast San Diego two times in the 20 years we've been open. We need your help. We need your help because out of the six grades that we have in our school, four of them will have combination classes. Our fifth graders have had 39 in their classrooms for five weeks. Our kids are our family. I spend more time with my children at school than I am allowed to spend with my child at home. She's home right now doing her homework by herself. Because I'm here, because I care about kids at Nye. This is what we're supposed to be doing. This came from you, this came from you, Ms. Martin. We're five weeks into the school year and we have developed routines and rituals. We've established relationships with both parents and students. We've developed a classroom culture. And now, more than 60 of our students are going to be moved. Please don't make arbitrary decisions.
Citizen? Thea Stein, Janice Taylor Romstad, Adalina Ramirez. All right, thank you very much. That completes the non-agenda public testimony. Thank you all for taking the time to speak to the board and superintendent today.
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I know we just received a memo today from the superintendent on the plan for supporting schools without English language support teachers. And I was hoping maybe we could put this on the next public agenda. So, a lot of the issues that were raised tonight by parents and teachers on this issue, we can have a full understanding of what steps the staff is taking to deal with the reduction of those positions. So we can put that on the 14th.
Okay, and Superintendent Martin, the plan for supporting all the schools with EL students, can you make this memo public? But issue it out, put it on the website so that all people can see it?
Sure, would you like both? You want to make the memo public, but then also just have it be an item on the next agenda so we can talk about it?
Right, yeah, let's go ahead and make it public as soon as we can so everybody can read your action plan to support all schools with English language students.
Yeah, I'm working with our executive director of leadership and learning, Jim Solow.
So will this be on the next agenda as well? Because I've said, I've read the memo and I don't really understand it.
We haven't had our agenda planning meeting yet, but we will definitely look at that. I think that's a very good idea.
Definitely look at that, okay.
Let's, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the October 7th, 2014, regular meeting, I think it should say charter meeting, to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium and you have not already submitted a request for a public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Cheryl Ward, the board action officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the board. Non-agenda public testimony was heard earlier at 5:00 and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. Onto section C, adopt the agenda. Is there a motion? Second? Please vote. That passes unanimously. Section D, student instructional matters. There are no student instructional matters on this agenda. E, operational matters reserved for the board. Item E1, Meridian International Academy, public hearing for petition to establish Meridian International Academy, a new charter school. Ms. Park, Superintendent Cindy Martin.
Good evening. Meridian International Academy is a new charter petition that has been submitted to the district for staff review. Staff is in process of reviewing it throughout the departments. It is proposed to be a K8 school, initially opening with grades K through 6. The proposed location is in the downtown area. And program characteristics include a Mandarin and/or Spanish immersion program at the school. The petitioners are here and I believe there are speakers who are here to express their support.
All right, we have a few public speakers on this information item. Miles Durfee, Kyovoe, Ryan Dalton, Gina Von Der Kret, Noah Hansen, and Janelle Godfrey. Please come forward and speak in any order. You have two minutes each.
Good evening. My name is Kyovoe and I'm one of the founding members of Meridian International Academy. First, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to be here today. We would like to take this opportunity to share our thoughts of why we think Meridian would be a great charter school for the San Diego community. Meridian has been a seed that has been planted since I was a young child. I always dreamt of a school where different cultures and languages could be celebrated, where teachers truly had a keen interest in wanting to know every student and help them reach their full potential. Where students can relate to what is taught in the classroom by way of doing projects and taking field trips. And more importantly, where students could feel safe and be empowered to excel on a daily basis. Today, I'm very proud... Today, I'm very proud and committed to stand here and attest to you, this is what Meridian stands for. Just a little bit background about myself. I have over 20 years of education experience. I started in higher education, working with numerous universities, then English as a second language programs, doing programs with, working with the Department of State, and also building ESL programs for other schools, charter schools, as well as private schools. Every student counts, and we can make a difference in every student's life, and this is how I know it. I was involved in developing a program with the Department of State where we brought Muslim students from, in various countries. I know it's hard to see. And the secret to that program was bringing American students to be part of the program. And it was not us teaching the students, it was the American students. Anyways, my time is up. Thank you very much for your attention.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Dalton, and I'm here to tell you a little bit why I want to work at Meridian International Academy. I've been a teacher for seven years. I started as an ESL teacher in Taiwan in mainland China, where I've been for the last six years. I originally wanted to be a history teacher, but I was studying Chinese overseas, and I took some part-time jobs and had a new career. Even though it's kind of delayed my ultimate goal of being a history teacher, it provided me with many, many years to learn Chinese language and culture, and I ended up in Beijing as a director of an ESL training school, and I also ended up working in an international kindergarten. And I got firsthand experience of why language is incredibly valued from early age through the high school years. I've personally helped five-year-olds prepare their English interviews for kindergartens in China. I've helped high school students prepare to study abroad in high schools and universities in the United States as well. What I saw, working in public and private schools there, was the international multicultural element that China's seeing today in the 21st century, and it's something I really think we need more of here in San Diego as well. I'm a San Diego native. I was born here, one of the very few, I think. I came back in Christmas with my wife and toddler son. We speak Chinese and English at home. I really want an environment for my son to be able to speak English and Chinese and learn Spanish all day throughout his school. We were really excited to see the Barnard Asian Pacific Academy, but we don't live in the district, and so it's not an option for my son. If we do have Meridian, I see it as being an opportunity to allow everybody the opportunity to have a well-rounded education that involves multiple languages, which is where many, many countries are going from. And so, I'm really, really hoping that we have the opportunity to have Meridian so that my son can have the best opportunity for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. My name is Noah Hansen. I'm the director of the International Student Center at San Diego State University, and I'd like to also share my thoughts on the Meridian International Academy and why I think this would be a great addition to San Diego. I've been involved with international education for over 10 years, and I got involved because I felt that so many of our young people in higher education had blinders on and were hardly aware of the world that they lived in. We live in a globalized world, and that may seem cliche to say, yet in our schools, we often see that students don't speak second languages and can't locate countries on a map. Our vision at SDSU is to give our young people opportunities for an international education and opportunities for exposure to diverse cultural values, and we strongly encourage second language acquisition. But becoming a global citizen takes time, and these same values are core to the mission of the Meridian International Academy. My staff and I also see on a daily basis the doors that are open for our students getting jobs after graduation because they speak two or more languages, and even more so when they're able to function in culturally sensitive environments. There's a clear push in higher education for our students to be global citizens and to speak a second languages and who understand how other cultures think. But language acquisition also takes time, and few of our students in this country are graduating with language skills at a high enough level to function professionally. But I would also say that apart from being valued by employers, I feel that a global education is more broadly required for our children to be comfortable simply living, operating, and socializing in this ever-changing world. I've decided to become involved with the Meridian International Academy because I support our children to have multilingual education with a global focus. Because we live in a world so inextricably connected to the advances of globalization, change is our constant companion, and coping with change becomes our collective challenge. The Meridian International Academy is addressing these changes, and I hope you will support the opening of this school.
Hi. My name is Gina Von Der Kret, and I'm the creative director at LGG Partners, which is an interactive design studio located in Little Italy. I'm also a proud mom of two elementary school children, one in second grade and one in kindergarten. Finding different educational opportunities for my kids has been a little bit of a challenge. We go to public school, which is really great. You know, and every year, I try to see like different opportunities that might be available, so I do apply at charters, at any other school, and there's little to no movement. You know, I've been on the waiting list at plenty of them for the last three years, and I think the best number I ever got was like 264 in the lottery. Earlier this year, I was introduced to Ky, as she helped me find a tutor for my daughter. And it was at that time that I heard about Meridian International Academy. So, learning about their programs, over the past couple of months, I quickly became an advocate because I believe in their mission and vision. Learning about the opportunities, the school focuses on international education and brings language skills into the curriculum is what I want for my children, and I want them to grow and learn in this way. This is inspiring to me because my children have an American and European background, and belonging to a school with an international focus would be instrumental in their development. Allowing them to learn more in-depth about their culture and culture with other students around them, it'll help them celebrate and cherish who they will become and cherish others around them. So, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Martin. I am Janelle Godfrey, founding member of Meridian International Academy. I hold an administrative credential and have worked as an educator and administrator at four different charter schools in San Diego County, and have been a founding member of two successful charter schools, Arroyo Paseo Charter High School and San Diego Global Vision Academy Middle School located in San Diego Unified School District. I joined the Meridian International Academy founding team because of the vision to create a dual-language program that has an international focus. We plan to create a prominent K-8 learning community that celebrates the diverse cultures inherent in San Diego County and specifically in downtown San Diego. As you've already heard from some of the founding team members, each of us brings a unique perspective and understanding of educating students and incorporating an international focus into the school program. My experience working with several different charter schools in San Diego Unified School District has provided me with an understanding of the unique challenges and opportunities charter schools face. One thing I've learned from my experience with charter schools is that to run a successful charter school, the operators must have a full understanding of education and business operations, and Meridian has both of these ingredients. My most recent experience working with charter schools has shown me that charter schools face an especially unique challenge when starting up. Finding a suitable facility and securing financing are two of the greatest obstacles for charter schools in the beginning. And we have identified several facilities options, as mentioned in our petition, and we will have a facility in our desired location to open our doors next school year. Also, we've applied for the Public Charter Schools Grant Program, and we have identified outside financing sources should the need arise. We understand the importance of hearing from the community, and therefore, early in the process of creating the charter petition, we involve parents and community members to assess interests and get buy-in, and we held several open houses to get feedback from our future stakeholders. Furthermore, we've identified some key staff and teachers whom will help us in planning implementing the educational program. Thank you for considering Meridian International.
My name is Miles Durfee. I'm managing regional director for the California Charter Schools Association for Southern California. I'm speaking tonight because I'm very happy to be here and support Meridian. I'm also very happy to see that there are three public hearings that you'll be in front of you tonight, and one decision-making hearing for renewal, and I think it really represents the vibrancy and the diversity of the charter community as far as independent study, and you have a site-based school that's doing great things in City Heights. You have a number of great programs that are coming for you, before you tonight. What I wanted to talk about a little bit briefly is what the CCSA review policy is for petitions, so that you know that we don't come here lightly at CCSA to support petitions unless we've been through the process of reviewing their petition and get a sense of what their capacity is to provide a program. So, we have reviewed the Meridian Charter School petition. We've also reviewed the Ingenuity Charter School petition that will be coming next, and that process is lengthy, and it goes through and looks at all the elements of the petition. But it also, you know, you can write a good petition, as you all have said on the dais before, it's really about operation and capacity. And so, one of the things that we really do is get a sense from the feedback that we give to the petitioners, what their capacity is to change those, to look at those issues, and to really deeply think about what their commitment is to the school. So, I just wanted to give you a little flavor of what that looks like for CCSA, because you will know we don't come on every petition in front of you and speak in support, because if we haven't reviewed it and really thoroughly diagnosed it, we're not comfortable with doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
President, could I just ask a question of one of the founders?
Yes, go ahead. Trustee Barnett.
Ms. Voe, I guess. Ms. Kyvoe, one of the biggest challenges we've seen charters have is getting established space, especially if, so I would encourage you on the various options that you're looking at to make sure you, as soon as possible, have meetings with the city to see if there's any conditional use permit requirements, which can be very expensive. I mean, schools like this in downtown urban areas, and I live downtown, live in Little Italy, and I think the school's concept is very exciting, is a challenge. There's issues parking and drop-off and all that. So, we recently had another school that literally at the last minute had to start school late because of space issues. So, I would encourage you to work as quickly as possible, and with the council representatives' office, Mr. Gloria as well, because that's, I think, going to be, is a challenge.
I agree with you, and we actually have been working on this for the past year. We have a seasoned real estate realtor working with us who worked with the urban school, and so, we're very aware of the situation, and it's a daunting task, but we're up for the challenge. We feel downtown is where it's needed. Thank you.
Great, and just one general comment. We have, besides Barnard Immersion School, we have two excellent, the Language Academy and Longfellow, and I think it would be, these are challenging programs, immersion, they can be very successful, and I think you might be able to learn some things from talking to some of them. And we also have Kavod, which is immersion now, Hebrew.
Sherman. Sherman. So, there's some very great success stories, both on the traditional public school and the charter school. And also, just for the gentleman, and this is not meant to sway you from going to this school, but Barnard accepts childrens from anywhere in the county, anywhere in the country. You don't have to live in the district to ask to come in.
So, if ultimately, just so you know, it is an option for any of our schools. We welcome students from throughout the county, country, world, to come to any of our great public or charter schools, traditional public schools.
Are they looking for a Chinese language teacher? After next week?
Thank you. Thank you for your advice.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kyvoe. That's an information item only. Onto item agenda E2. Or, I'm sorry, any other board member questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much for your time. Onto item E2, Ingenuity Charter School, public hearing for the petition to establish Ingenuity Charter School, a new charter school as part of the O'Farrell Charter Schools. Ms. Park, Superintendent Cindy Martin.
Thank you. As mentioned, Ingenuity is a petition to start a new school. It would be part of the network of the existing O'Farrell Charter Schools governing board. So, it is a new petition from an existing operator. The grade levels would be 6 through 12, and it is proposed as a non-classroom-based independent study type of educational program. The lead petitioner is Dr. Jonathan Dean, who, among other speakers, are here to express support for the petition. The projected enrollment is laid out, and part of the facilities plan would include a proposal to operate on the O'Farrell campus in addition to other aspects.
All right. We have a few speakers on it, obviously. Dr. Jonathan Dean, Brian Henderson, Moises Buhein, Brian Rainey, Andrea Shaw, and Miles Durfee. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, Superintendent Martin, board members. My name is Jonathan Dean, principal superintendent of the O'Farrell Charter Schools. Tonight, I among, I among others, are here to present Ingenuity Charter School. This is a non-seat-based blended learning school that will enhance students' abilities to become more academically and socially productive. The first conversations of drafting and presenting Ingenuity Charter School began several years ago with our staff, parents, and the larger community. We were discussing the idea of charter schools taking care of students' place in alternative education. Since this initial discussion, our teachers and community have asked us to look into programs that would address the aforementioned and offer services to students wishing to ascertain their GED, participate in credit recovery, and participate in independent study. O'Farrell has demonstrated over the past 20 years that it can offer an academically-based program along with rigorous curriculum, with the intent of returning most students back to their neighborhood schools. We have a strong belief that most students are more successful in a traditional school setting. I would close with directing your attention to the Union Tribune article dated December 10, 2013. The article, which is present in Ingenuity's charter petition, talks about the quality of school O'Farrell has become. We will bring the same energy and commitment to Ingenuity Charter School. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good evening. My name is Brian Henderson, and I served the role as education specialist for the seventh grade at O'Farrell. Growing up in southeast San Diego, I know many individuals who cannot complete the rigors of a traditional public school. Individual student struggles was associated with learning disabilities, certain medical conditions, psychological and behavior issues. Some students struggle with personality disorders, substance use and abuse, depression and violence. On the other hand, some students were unusually gifted. Alternative schools can provide a safer therapeutic environment along with more individualized attention than traditional schools. This is why O'Farrell staff is inspired to create Ingenuity Charter School to meet the needs of children and adolescents who cannot learn effectively in a traditional school environment. Teachers at O'Farrell encourage a safe, secure, and educational environment which allow our students to believe that they will succeed. Thank you.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. My name is Brian Rainey. I'm the high school assistant principal at the O'Farrell Charter School. And as my colleague Brian said, we, at the O'Farrell Charter Schools, we believe that in order to be successful, we need to give every child what they need to succeed, and it's been a part of our success, and that we make sure no kids fall through the gap. But there is a gap that students fall through. Two kinds of students, one that Brian talked about, students that have struggles in their life, whether it's at home, whether it's their situation, disabilities that they might have, and they fail out of school, they drop out of school, and become a burden to society even. They fall through the gap. Other students don't do well in a traditional classroom setting because they're not traditional classroom learners, and they often drift through school. And then, one of the saddest students to see, they drift away, their attendance gets horrible, and they just stop going to school, and they fall through the gap. We at O'Farrell want to close that gap. We want to create this Ingenuity Charter so that those students don't fade off, don't fail away, but we can shore them back up, step in the gap, get them back together, back on track, and hopefully get them back into a traditional school setting. We think we are uniquely equipped to do this at O'Farrell. It's the type of work we have been doing, and this type of school will allow us to reach the needs of those students that have so far fallen through that gap. And so, we're ready to do that, and I think the Ingenuity is well put together to do exactly that thing. Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished board members and Superintendent Cindy Martin. My name is Moises Buhein, and I have the pleasure of serving as a head counselor at O'Farrell Charter School. I grew up just like Brian in southeast San Diego, and I attended local San Diego Unified Schools in District E. It's great to work at O'Farrell. It's a school that works relentlessly to implement promising practices that close the achievement gap. Without a doubt, one of the best parts of being a high school counselor is helping first-generation college students and their families engage in education. There's nothing like witnessing the joy from parents and students as they open up in March, big envelopes from all the college admits letters that they've been accepted to. There's nothing like that. As a school counselor, I'm aware that much more needs to be done in our schools so that all students have all students have the option to experience the same joy of opening up those big white envelopes. This is exactly what First Lady Michelle Obama highlighted in her July address to school counselors, that the role of a school counselors and school has to do a better job of closing that gap. Through access to rigorous courses, including online advanced placement, teachers who care, and continued access to comprehensive services, the proposed establishment of Ingenuity Charter School will assist even more students and families in the southeast San Diego region seeking a non-traditional route, really get that goal of getting those big white acceptance letters. So, thanks for your consideration and your time on this matter.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrea Shaw, and I'm an elementary teacher at the O'Farrell Charter School. I was also a student at the O'Farrell Charter School when it first became a charter school back in the 90s. As a community member of southeast San Diego, I have seen how alternative education has benefited our children. I know that you share with me in giving the children of Encanto who need alternatives to the traditional education system, an opportunity to learn through Ingenuity Charter School. Please consider Ingenuity Charter as an avenue of learning for children who might miss out on the traditional education system until they are able to rejoin a district or traditional school. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker, Maria Baker.
Good evening. My name's Maria Baker. I'm a parent, and also, I'm on the board for the Learning Choice Academy. I'm the vice president there. But the reason I'm here is to show support for Ingenuity Charter for the reason that my son goes to an independent study school due to the fact that he was bullied in school so he cannot be in a traditional school setting. The downside to the Learning Choice Academy is that they don't provide an athletic program. Here at Ingenuity, he will have that choice. He'll be able to play competitively in a sport of his choosing. That's what's being offered to him, and he's excited for that opportunity to go to this school next year. So, I say to you, please support the school to commence next year, not just for him, but for other students who seek some type of athletic program out there for them. Thank you.
It's Miles Durfee again. I promise I'm not going to speak to all the items that are coming tonight, and, but I will say that I support all the ones that are coming in front of you tonight. I did want to underscore this one because I think it represents something that you see a lot at your schools, at the traditional public schools as well, which is a high-performing team that has identified a need and has found a way to serve that need in the future. And so, I think this is one of those, one of those situations where you already have a charter school that's doing great things and has looked for an innovative way to continue to do that work in the community that they serve. So, again, they did go through the petition review process with CCSA as well, and we strongly support them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public speakers on the information item E2, Ingenuity Charter School. Thank you. Board member comments or questions? Mr. Barrera?
Yeah, thanks. Maybe Jonathan. So, I'm interested in how you guys arrived at the identification of the need and kind of the analysis of what's out there. You got Charter School of San Diego, you got I High. And then, in that, how, you know, what's the plan to identify students and?
The first need was actually, I wanted to kind of leave it out, it was brought to me by San Diego Unified Past Administration, actually, in a meeting about four years ago on the need. And what it was is really to kind of start some type of opportunity program so kids wouldn't flood some of the other systems that San Diego Unified has. Going up and down the state, talking about this charter, it's going to be very different than any non-seat-based charter. There won't be something like that because most of them, if they're not districts, don't operate a site-based charter. So, we're going to be able to offer amenities, electives, different types of curriculum that's already established on O'Farrell. And then, we're going to have summer programs that actually will enhance all kids, could come there for the six weeks.
So, you connect it back to the O'Farrell facility?
Exactly. Exactly. And that, you know, you want to tie that in so the kids get the very biggest bang for their buck. And I think we're going to be able to put some programs together that is very helpful to keep kids off the street. I mean, it's a big, big idea of mine is to keep kids active during summer instead of having all that inactivity when they get in trouble on our weekends. Of course, you know that O'Farrell actually has school on Friday nights and Saturdays. So, we'd incorporate a lot of things that we're able to, and I've been discussing with the CDE on a couple of different situations that probably haven't been tried recently, and that will have to do with a term semester that we start July 1st to August 15th, when school ends and when school begins. So, I think it'll be pretty, pretty unique programs. All right, thanks, Richard.
Any other board member comments or questions? All right, thank you very much for your time. That was an information item only. Onto item E3, Kavod Elementary Charter School, public hearing on the renewal of Charter of Kavod Elementary School.
Thank you. Kavod is a charter school with a modern Hebrew language component. It is an elementary school that has served most recently, or currently grades K through three. It did have a delayed opening, so we, this is the second year that the school has been opened. So, there is somewhat of a limited amount of academic data, given the testing situation and the grade level served. The staff is currently reviewing other aspects of the petition, and we're also looking at school selected assessments to ensure that we have a comprehensive picture when we bring a recommendation to you at a subsequent meeting. I understand there are speakers here to express their support of the program, and we've noted some of the demographics of the school for your review and note that the school is co-located with a district school.
Thank you. We have over 60 speakers. Fortunately, there was a few people that have decided to speak on behalf of the over 60 folks, and so, we are grateful. The folks that have agreed to represent the, everybody here today, please come forward and speak in any order. Tamar Caspi, Addie Sparks, Alexa Greenland, Angela Wolf, Debbie Hyatt, Robin Coughlin, Jeremy Van Frank, and that's it. Please come forward and speak in any order. You have two minutes each.
Superintendent Martin, President Beiser, and San Diego Unified School Board District. My name's Alexa Greenland. I'm the director of Kavod, and I want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to have opened our school. As Susan has said, or Ms. Park said, we have only been open for one year, and in that year, we've had a tremendous outcome. I'm really going to let the parents and the students and the teachers speak on behalf of the school, as everything I had said is already within our president's letter, and I don't want to waste your time here this evening. So, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
On behalf of my six-year-old son Zachary, I stand in front of you pleading for your support to renew Kavod Charter Schools. Prior to Zachary beginning kindergarten at Kavod in 2013, our family had been healing from a crisis. Since Zachary's first week of life, if we were not in the emergency room or the doctor's offices seeing specialists or receiving preventative examinations or treatments, we hid in our private home, shielding our family from judgment or criticism as a result of Zachary's daily inconsolable screaming and crying, behavioral problems, speech and language delays, and social detachment. By the time Zachary reached five years old and began catching up to his typical age peers, regardless of our emotional exhaustion, our hypervigilance in ensuring Zachary was surrounded by consistent trustworthy adults in a supportive educational setting became our priority. As we did our research and sought out appropriate placement for Zachary to begin kindergarten, we were thrilled with all the extra perks Kavod Charter School offered. A small-student-to-teach-a-ratio, a learning environment that supported Zachary's learning pace while also pushing him to reach his full potential, a school that promoted community service projects, not to mention a free language immersion program. All of the above benefits the school had to offer targeted our wishes for Zachary's scholastic experience. But it wasn't those extra perks that anchored our decision to start Zachary at Kavod and to continue to keep him there in his early school years. It was the genuine warmth and care of the director, Alexa Greenland, the administrative assistant, Eduardo Meza, the Hebrew director, Ron Yerushalayim, and the amazing teachers such as Tara Whiteside and Shana Yedid, who individually have provided our family with a sense of human connection, family support, that has made a priceless influence on not only Zachary's emotional and behavioral development, but also on our healing. Kavod's commitment to our family and to the time and support they have provided us in transitioning to the school has been priceless. The leadership and staff have gone out of their way to be emotionally present and stand in our corner when obstacles are prevalent. We're regularly treated as if we are their only family that they work with. What I really need to emphasize here is that it's not just Zachary that they're treating as their own, and the emotional development he's had as a result, but this extended family members I talk about are, is not just limited to him. It's Kavod Charter Schools partners with all of their individual students and family members to ensure the development of responsible citizens who can thrive in our community through not just talking the talk, but walking the walk with the children and the families. Overall, I plead for your support in extending for Zachary's future and for my Kavod charter family.
Thank you.
Thank you, the board and Superintendent Martin, for allowing me to speak on behalf of Kavod's charter renewal. As a homeowner, my husband and I, homeowners in Claremont Mesa, my husband and I were very excited and really important, we think it's important to have access to the high-quality education. I'm sure we share that with all the other parents here. We especially like the small class sizes that Kavod offered. We like their strong academic program and innovative teaching methods, and we like the workshop model. I think we like the diversity at the school as well, and the emphasis on its, and teaching and educating the children to be good world citizens with the dual-language program and multicultural atmosphere, which encourages respect and cross-cultural understanding. But most importantly, Olivia comes home excited at the end of the day. She wants to share what she's learned with us. She's very engaged by her activities and her environment, encourages her own initiative and interests. Kavod to us is more than just a school. The administrators and the other parents are a very important part of our community, our family's community too. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie Hyatt, and I have a kindergartner and a second grader at Kavod. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. For those who know me, they know that I have high standards for my children's education. And with that said, I do advocate for this school because I believe it can be amazing. We are on our way to amazing. One of the reasons we took our son out of the very good school he was already attending was because we wanted to be a part of something from the grassroots, the ground up. We wanted to help build something meaningful for our children. We have a voice at Kavod. I feel very comfortable talking to the director or the Hebrew director and expressing my ideas to make this grounding school better. Sometimes I hear the word "no," or "that's not feasible right now," but more often than not, I hear "that's a great idea, help me implement it." And even when I do hear the word "no," I understand that my ideas were heard with an open mind and that there were solid reasons why my ideas were not implemented. And by the way, I want a strong director. We need a strong director to say no to my cockamamie ideas or others. The other major reason we chose Kavod is because we like the idea of a partial language immersion program, not a full immersion program. Our family dynamic, and I speak for many Kavod families, is just not cut out for full language immersion. Our children can learn a foreign language during the course of the school day in a non-stressful, dare I say, fun environment. If you haven't already, I urge you to come watch our fantastic Hebrew team at work, and you will see what I mean. If you decide not to renew Kavod's charter petition, all of us who cannot afford to send our children to a private school have nowhere else to turn for a Hebrew language program. There is no other program like this in San Diego. We took a chance, a risk, sending our children to a brand-new school. Please, please let Kavod have a chance to demonstrate you made the right decision in the first place when you granted Kavod's initial charter petition. We are just getting started. We are on our way to amazing. Thank you.
My name's Kelly Booth, and I'm the second-grade teacher at Kavod, as well as being the proud parent to a new kindergarten student at Kavod this year. And when I thought about what I was going to speak to you guys about tonight, I thought back to my interview at Kavod. I've been with Kavod since the beginning, and I remembered leaving my interview feeling so excited and energized because I felt like my educational philosophies really meshed well with what Kavod had to offer. So, fast forward to today, and I'm proud and happy to stand here before you and let you know that my initial excitement and energy is still here for Kavod. I love the programs that we have to offer. And one of the best things, I think, about Kavod is our values curriculum that we add into our, into our daily studies. So, every month, Kavod students focus on one value. Last month, it was respect. This month, it was collaboration. And last year, one of my proudest moments as a teacher was hearing my second-grade students use words like perseverance and empathy in natural conversations and using them correctly. I thought that that was really amazing and a powerful testament to the program that Kavod has to offer. And also, look at this amazing support we have here today. I mean, it's, it's, it really is a family, and just like Debbie said, we're all working together. The collaboration between the school board and the administration and the teachers and the students and the parents, it has created a really positive, powerful learning education for our students, one that I look forward to working at for years to come. So, thank you very much.
Shalom.
I'm Addie. And the reason why I like Kavod is that we get to, we get to learn about lots of things that we didn't know about before, and we learn them really, and we learn them really fast sometimes, and we learn them very slow sometimes. And I like, and I like this school also because I, I get to speak Hebrew a lot. And I really like seeing everyone happy at school and learning because it makes me feel happy.
Good job, Addie.
Thank you very much.
Again, this is an information item only. Thank you very much, Kavod.
Mr. President.
Yeah, trustee Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to check, I see that we, that was initially authorized, the charter petition was for three years. I don't remember the history of why that was offered for three years rather than five years in the first place, but I think, what I'm saying is, when we, when we authorize for only three years, we can end up with very scant information. Because first of all, they delayed one year, they operated one year, and now they're in, just beginning their second year of operation. So, I don't know, first of all, can you fill me in on what we did?
To summarize, it was one of the first language immersions we saw in a non-traditional language. We also were looking at the admissions criteria in that it was one of the first schools to open without a full K5 or 68. So, the projected opening was to be a K1, K2, and then slowly add a grade. So, these were factors that staff considered operationally, which flow over into financially. And there was a partnership with a national foundation, and we wanted to, as staff, make sure that we wouldn't keep a potentially successful charter from being approved, but we wanted to see how it would fare with a three-year term. As you've noted, that does unfortunately limit some of the academic data. And of course, when staff recommended approval for a three-year term, we did not anticipate that the CSTs would not be available for the 13, 14 school year. And of course, the delay was school-initiated, not staff-initiated, and I believe related, at least partially, to facilities. So, it was a combination of factors that staff considered in recommending three-year. And then, after the approval, there were additional factors that were just not foreseeable at the time of approval. So, we do have that limited data. I wanted to assure our board that we've been in regular communication with Kavod about presenting some comprehensive academic data as a result of not having the traditional CST number to bring to you, and we will definitely include that in our staff recommendation for action. But we do know it won't, it will be somewhat different from what we've traditionally brought to you for renewals.
And just for future reference, if, if a school doesn't open the next school year but delays for a year, is there any way to delay this process? You know, in other words, whether it's three years or five years from the opening of the school as opposed to three or five years from the approval of the school?
For a new charter- For a new charter school, the opening has to be before September 30th, or else the entire school year is delayed. If a school delays for one year, we consider the remainder of the term to have been set in the board approval. We like the term to be set in concretely and explicitly, so the school cannot just keep a running charter, if you will. With regard to Cavode, we have taken three-year term charters and extended it either for one or two years to give it a full five-year. Staff is in consideration of that to bring to you. One of the things that would balance in our analysis is if we extended it one or two years for Cavode, we would not have substantially more assessment data and standardized assessments. So we're trying to balance whether we give this charter one or two more years or the full five years, hoping to get a solid academic. And so we'll always look at the other two areas, financial, the budgets, the reserve, and on-time payments, and then governance and operations. Are we seeing a lot of movement in their board roster? Are we seeing solid parent representation and opportunities for parent involvement? So we'll weigh that in bringing whether a two-year extension or a five-year renewal.
All right, thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? All right, Toda Raba. Onto item E4, San Diego Global Vision Academies, renewal of a charter of San Diego Global Vision Item E4, San Diego Global Vision Academy's renewal of a charters of San Diego Global Vision Academy Elementary Charter School and San Diego Global Vision Academy Middle Charter School, and special education agreements. Ms. Park.
Thank you. San Diego Global Vision Academies are two separate charter schools, the elementary school and the middle school. And in addition, San Diego Global Vision Academies are both LEA members of El Dorado Salsa, hence the special education agreements. Staff is today recommending approval of the renewal of both the elementary school charter and the middle school charter for five-year terms that would end June 30th, excuse me, June 30th, 2020. Staff's recommendation to approve is based on the analysis set forth in the agenda item details. We do note that San Diego Global Vision Academy Elementary is in its fifth year of operation, and the middle school is in its third year. And from what I remember, the terms of the middle school being less than five was so that the terms of the two schools could be aligned for renewal purposes going forward. The schools partially are operated on a non-district site and co-located with Adams Elementary School, and both schools are located in the Hoover Cluster. Academic and enrollment information is summarized in several tables. We note and can, are happy to answer questions, and I know that the, the Executive Director, Dina Harris, is here also to answer questions. API for the elementary school has steadily grown, beginning over 800, and the most recent score being 869. The middle school, having had a shorter term, did most recently report an 848 API, and is in its first year of serving the full grades of six through eight. The projected enrollment tables are also there, and with respect to the education codes eligibility for renewal, among other factors that included the API score, we considered the most recent statewide rank for the elementary school being eight, which is over the minimum four, and for the middle school being a statewide rank of seven, again, over the minimum of four. More detailed subgroup data is enclosed, and we also wanted to note that the schools, in terms of their middle school and elementary school, the sixth grade was initially part of the elementary school, but currently and for the future term will be solely with the middle school. So it'd be a clarification of grade levels going forward. The documents have been reviewed by staff for the finance component. The school has met all minimum reserve requirements. The school has been visited annually by staff, which includes a team of accountants and charter office managers. We've interviewed staff at the school, we've interviewed leaders at the school, students and parents over the three- and five-year terms, and are confident and pleased to bring your recommendation to approve or renewal.
Thank you very much. We do have a public speaker on the item, Jenny Taylor.
Please, for the next side.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Question, sir.
Sure, go ahead, Trustee.
The, the location of the two sites, are they still going to stay as they currently are, is that the anticipation?
Yes, my understanding is there is a Prop Z-related proposal, and the idea is that the school would continue to operate at both locations and in some combination, I believe predominantly with the elementary school co-located and predominantly with the middle school at the non-district site.
Any other board member comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor to renew the charter, renewal of both San Diego Global Vision Elementary and Middle School and Special Education Agreements. Please vote. That passes unanimously. The Urban Discovery Academy, this is a revision to a current existing charter of Urban Discovery Academy Charter School to change its location. Ms. Park.
Thank you. Urban Discovery Academy has mostly been operated on a non-district private facility, and then last year applied for a Prop 39 and is operating at, let me just get the address, 730 45th Street, which is located in the Lincoln Cluster. The school communicated with us that they are seeking to move in the fall of 2015 to a private location in the downtown area at 1328 F Street, and we're trying to improve our processes in making sure material revisions with respect to facilities come to the district board for consideration well ahead of the actual move. And this is, as you can see, subject to conditions related to the school demonstrating compliance with city processes before occupancy, along with a comprehensive revised school safety plan to reflect the new site. I believe the school principal is here to address the board as well.
All right, Jenny Taylor for item five, not item four. Please come forward.
Sorry about that. I'm just here to let you know that we're here to answer questions. I'm here with my board member, Judge Curial, and as you have mentioned, it's a long fight to find a facility, and we're gracious to have been able to be at a Prop 39 site this year and hopefully made it look a little bit extra super for you all. So thanks, and let us know if you have any questions, but I think you have all the materials that you need.
Great, thank you very much, Jenny. Any board member comments or questions? We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, please vote. That item passes unanimously. Onto item E6, the First Amendment to a multi-year facility use permit agreement with San Diego Global Vision Academy. Mr. Dolgarauf and Mr. McPhail. Gentlemen, could you please join us up at the dais, please? Thank you.
This is, this is to approve the amendment for the multi-year facilities use permit, and it's going to extend the agreement by one year to end on June 30th, 2016. If you have questions for Mr. Dolgarauf, you can answer.
This is a simple one-year extension to their current facilities use agreement. There was a slight modification to the space that was allotted, but other than that, it's pretty much a, a one-year extension due to the fact that we have, the board has approved feasibility study and planning for Prop Z improvements that will ultimately change the layout of that facility and provide for better co-location.
Okay, any board member comments or questions? We have a motion, is there a second? There's a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Dolgarauf and McPhail. Well done, gentlemen. We have a motion on F1 and F2.
There's a modification on F2 on the wording being proposed on the visas.
Okay.
So, do you want to do F1?
Okay, I'll move F1.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor for item F1, the agreement with Fenton Little Italy LLC to temporarily place historic house on Amitsi Park site. Any board member comments or questions? Okay, please vote. That passes unanimously. Onto item F2.
Yeah, the...
Ms. Donovan.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, President Bowser. F2 is an item, originally, we were looking for authorization to simply sponsor two H1B visas for two particular teachers who were recruited by the principal at the Mandarin Chinese Program at Barnard. In further discussions about whether we would have a need to do this in the future, Mr. Barnard had suggested, and I don't disagree, that it makes sense to have the chief human resources officer vested with the delegated authority to file H1B visa applications, provided that we have a coherent process whereby we identify and recruit these people, make a determination that they are in fact the folks that we need, and then the chief HRO would have the ability to file those on the district's behalf. There are some responsibilities that we take on with respect to sponsoring immigrant visas that are discussed in the agenda item, but that would be the modification.
I'll support that, move the item, including Mr. Barnard's.
Yeah, and just so, in the recommendation, it says authorize chief human resource or his or her designate to file application for H1B visas for, and then strike out up to two, four visiting teachers, strike out from China, so that they may be employed by the district, period. And this would allow, if we have Spanish teachers, French teachers, Arabic or future Chinese teachers, the, the district HR director have the authority to do that. So that is the proposed change to the wording that the attorney's reviewed and agreed to.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
With the second. Any other board member comments or questions? All right, please vote. As amended, that passes unanimously. Onto item, section G, public participation, public testimony on non-agenda items. Do we have any additional speakers? You have two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. At Nye Elementary, we put our students first, and we stress teamwork and fair play in all we do. Please show our students that you are also a part of the team that will put the hard-working, beautiful students at Nye Elementary first. Please think about their needs and rights to a first-rate and quality education. Children's, children need and thrive in a stable environment, and for some children, their school is where they find that stable environment, with loving teachers like Ms. Taylor Romstad, who care enough to speak up for them and that never give up on them. Please do your part to help us keep our students thriving at Nye. And remember that so many combination classes will not support common core rigor, which is something that they need to stand up to. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. The next regular meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, or some people might think it's the year 5775. We are adjourned.